... report out of the study session, so I will, that is my motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any objections? See none, so move. Alright, so at this point, we're gonna go ahead and move into the, excuse me, sorry about that, we're gonna open up the Ballpark City Council Regular Meeting, today's October the 4th, 2017, the time is 7:10. I will have Pastor Jackson to lead us in invocation, followed by the flag, so Pastor Jackson, you can make your way up to the lectern. Gina Yala here? Oh, she is, okay. Thought she was up in San Diego with her sister. Okay. Alrighty. Thank you, Allahs. Everyone to please stand, if you're able, thank you.
Heavenly Father, we come before you right now in the name of the Lord. We have a serious problem in our nation, things that are happening, and according to your word, there will be ethnos against ethnos, people against people. This outrageous shooting that took place in Las Vegas, Lord. We lift up the people. Number one, we lift up the survivors, Lord, and we thank you, Lord God, for those that are responders, that are out there, that first move in responders. We thank you, Lord God, for the officers and everyone that put a helping hand out there to help them. Lord, in our nations, we've had the hurricanes, the tornadoes, the fire. We've had many things that are happening, but we need your grace and we need your mercy. And even in our own city, Lord God, we had a few of them that had passed away, not from Las Vegas, but from here, for whatever reason it is. And I lift up the family here in Baldwin Park, Lord God, that the God of all comfort will comfort them. And I lift up our city, period, our city council, and we just need you, according to your word, if my people, which are called by my name, will humble themselves and pray, and seek my face, and turn from their wicked ways, then will we hear from heaven, and you will heal our land. Our land need to be healed, in the name of the Lord Jesus.
Amen, thank you. At this point, sorry about that, go ahead, Pastor Flores.
Lord, thank you for, today I join with Pastor Jackson, we pray for our city, our council, our mayor, Lord, our law enforcement personnel, our chief of police. Lord, we come to realize we are all human beings and we all fall short, we all miss the mark, and we see that over and over again. And yet, God, we are alive, we have purpose, we have design. Help us, Lord, to seek your will in all of our affairs of the city. We pray, Lord, for deliberations and discussions, that they're honorable and respectful. We pray, God, for our public, those who are here, Lord, that are interested, Father, and have a vested interest in their city. We thank you for that. Gracias señor por este privilegio para participar en esta ciudad. Yo quiero experiencia tu poder y tu presencia en este reunión. Ayuda señor la ciudad en el nombre de Padre, Hijo y Espíritu Santo. Amen.
And thank you very much. At this point, we're gonna face the flag, place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First of all, I wanna say, good evening to everyone that's here before we take the roll call, and our deepest condolences goes out to the tragedy, tragic event that occurred in Las Vegas. Incredible. I hope that someday, we address the issue of guns overall, something that hopefully will at least assist us and guide us, and providing a much safer environment for each and every one of us. And also, to our Puerto Rican brothers and sisters. I mean, here is a territory of the United States that I personally think has been ignored and taken out of the media, now that the president obviously has been there, and hopefully continue to supply. These are United States citizens, and a lot of people think they're foreigners, no, they're part of the United States. And I hope that we continue forth in making certain that we provide everything that's needed for our Puerto Rican brothers and sisters, as well as some of the other territory islands that are around those particular areas, because no one should be, should have to wait this long to be able to be serviced, especially when you're a part of this country. They should not be looked at secondary individuals, they are Americans, just like we are here in the main island, or the United States. Alright, so at this point-
Mayor, just have a quick-
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, and then we'll go over to councilmember Monica Garcia.
Just very quick, just keep in mind, the victims of the horrific event that happened in Las Vegas, I know a lot of us either have friends or may know somebody who was a victim of that terrible event that happened last Sunday. My parents happened to have been there, and they also, I think, granted to Maria Contreras, I believe, my parents saw you there, and thank God they weren't where this event happened and occurred. But just continue to pray for peace in this country, that people just stop the violence that continues throughout our nation, and hopefully that will begin to come back to normal and stop seeing this terrible violence that's continuing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember. At this point, councilmember Monica Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd also like to close on behalf of Jordan Rivera, she's the granddaughter of Carol Gonzalez, a longtime head start teacher here in our community in the Balden Park Unified School District, and unfortunately, this beautiful young woman was at the concert, and she was killed, and so wanna extend our condolences, you know, for this great, great loss, and as well as for the 50-plus victims of this very horrific event. And I also want to ask that we bring back a resolution with regard to the Domestic Violence Month, and, you know, just make sure that we are recognizing the month appropriately, and also, you know, highlighting the domestic violence advocate program that we have here in our community, and perhaps even sharing that once again, you know, through the newsletter, just as a reminder that in honor of the Domestic Violence Month, that we would, Awareness Month, that, you know, we have these resources available to our community.
Thank you. Also, before I forget, we had a very, one of our senior citizens, Tony J. Rodriguez, who just passed away last week. This individual partook in many events here in the city of Ballpark, to our seniors, one of the most respectable individuals I've met in our community. So our deepest condolences goes out to him and his family, the services are this, actually tomorrow, so, at Rose Hills Memorial Park. Alright, councilmembers wishing, and not, at this point-
Mayor, I just wanna say something really quick.
Sure, sure.
I just wanna say that we were there, my husband and I, but for some reason, my parents were holding me not to go with them, with my, we have visitors from Tascos Guerrero, which are our sister city, and of course, they just went through all the earthquake, and they were crossing the street right when it was starting the bullets, and she, they didn't know what was going on, and they didn't speak English, they, like I said, they just got all scared, the policeman would say, "Go, go, go, go," and they could just go, and they ended up in one place, and they ran to the other place, and they kept them at the Bellagio for till 4:30 in the morning. My husband and I were sleeping away in the hotel, not knowing what was going on, and then at 5:00 in the morning, his cousin from Guadalajara called him, because he knew we were in Las Vegas, to find out if we were okay, and said, "We don't know what's going on." We turned on the TV, and we just relived the moment. The next day, there was like, nobody in the casinos, there was officers every other side, but, you know, it was very, very scary, very blessed to follow our instincts and not go, but God bless those people that are suffering, and, that's it.
Thank you very much. Alright, at this point, yes, councilmember Cruzbaca.
I would just like to ask everyone, and I know it's a beautiful prayer, the Pastor Jackson and Pastor Flores, but for everyone to please find peace, not only in their hearts, but in their minds, and to pray for everyone to find peace, because individuals who do this, whether it's domestic violence, naturally do not have peace within themselves, and for them to find peace, so that we can have it and restore it back, not only in the United States, but throughout the world. Thank you.
Alright, alright, thank you very much. At this point, Madam City, oh, excuse me, yes, City Treasurer, Monica Contreras, will take roll call.
Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches a todos. Councilmember Cruzbaca.
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. Mayor Potem, Susan Rubio.
I'm going to excuse her, she's not feeling well.
Mayor Manuel Lozano.
Present, thank you very much. Alright.
Oh, please excuse Alejandra.
Oh, yes, and we'll also, yeah, Alejandra Avila, our city clerk, will excuse her as well. Alright, we don't have any presentations, so at this point, we're going to go into the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak, we have approximately, you have approximately three minutes, you're welcome to come up.
This is from Manny Correia. You were addressed, last council meeting, by John Rios and Mr. Luna. Where did the swing set go? Where did the slide set go? There was no definite answer. I wanna know who got the swing set? Did it go to a scrapyard, or whatever? Roast said that during the findings of Vasquez, that everything was in good shape, so that means our capital items have been all listed, and we should know when they get disposed of and where they go. So I'd like a definite answer, where did the swing set go and the slide? Now, as far as the wall burn contract that Monica's friend drew up, this, this contract is ridiculous. You're gonna give away city land for free, because he can't build the way that he designed the first project. So why did we even do appraisal on the land? Why did we even do that? Because he's gonna get this thing cheaper now. The contract is illegal, as far as I'm concerned, I've had attorneys look at it, two different attorneys look at it, and we're gonna fight it, 'cause this is totally bogus that came up. The third thing is, is I'd like to know why the mayor and Monica were meeting at Lazy Dog with Sid Masavi after the last council meeting. Looks pretty suspicious when you're meeting with the guy that's doing a lot of work here in the city and raping the city. The other thing I wanna know, Mr. Pacheco stated on here that, "I was the cause of all the city's cost." Well, Mr. Pacheco, who filed the restraining order? You did. Manny Lozano, Monica, who lost? You did. You cost the city $52,000 in attorney fees. Oh, shake your head, anybody want proof? I got it. Then you go into the crying that you got, took up to Santa Barbara. I did a small claims court, you didn't have to spend any money with that, just show up. What did you do? Have the city attorney make up all these papers for you. You thought you were gonna get out and be really clever. That didn't work, 'cause what you, people didn't understand, small claims court doesn't take attorney information. But you didn't realize that, 'cause you guys aren't that smart. So what'd you do? You didn't have anything up there, but you spent thousands of dollars, the city money, to go up there and use the city attorney's time to make up bogus papers that were never read by the Superior Court Judge. Now then, we go into the class with the, the videos of the BPCA, Facebook. We don't audit anything. Yes, do we condense, so that the time isn't boring? Yes. But do we cut out your time?
No, thank you very much, appreciate it. Alright, moving on with public communication. Okay, any-
The past couple weeks, I've been looking at the videos that we put to the internet and everything, on all the meetings, okay? Mayor, in one point, you need to put a stop to all this yelling between yourself, hitting the, the desk right there, to Monica, because she's out of control. It's your right, and you're the mayor, and you have the right to dismiss a person like that. You can ask the lawyer right there. You know, if Mr. Taro would be talking like that, you would send him out. Mr. Luna, you're out. Mr. Wood, you're out. You know, you gotta have control of your city council. You're the mayor, we look up to you, to certain things, but you're not proving yourself no more. I talked to a bunch of people, they saw what you were doing and everything, well, Monica went out of, you know, less field, you thought she was still the cheerleader, she wasn't, you know? She was just out of hand, and you should have put a stop to it, right there and then. Another thing is, Mr. Pacheco, in one of the meetings, you stated to Mrs. Cruz, to let me know- Go ahead, smile, smile. Ask Mrs. Cruz to give you some names that people from City Hall had complaints. She no dummy, or the people ain't gonna be saying it's me, or go to Human Resources, they're not. Because within a couple of weeks, you'll be out of a job. You know, people are not dumb, you know, you're out of control. You know, I don't care if you smile all the way to the bank, when you get your little cuts, okay? You know, but, you know, it's, you have to learn that you're doing wrong, you're taking the money from the citizens of Ballpark, their tax money, and playing around with it, you know? And the mayor, you should put a stop to it, you know? That's something that we need to do, you know? I'm not the only one. There's people in the neighborhoods that are talking about it, okay? There goes my two.
Alright, thank you very much. Moving along with public communication. Hello, Christine, how are you? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Councilmembers, staff, and residents of Balden Park. I'm Christina Larios, Library Manager at Balden Park Library. Just wanted to give you an update from the last meeting I mentioned, that our copper backflow pipe for our sprinkler system was stolen. It's now been replaced, so hopefully, we will begin to put our sprinklers on and revitalize the landscape.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, alright. Moving along with public communication.
I'm just wondering, when are you gonna do the decorum paper, you know, that, I go to the West Covina City Council, to the Susac City Council, to the Irwindale, and they don't, the people can come and say whatever they want, but they cannot say it to a council member. It has to be to the whole body. So they don't, they cannot name names, they cannot talk about anybody, they just talk about the problem, and they have a solution. But, you know, because I'm getting tired of coming to these meetings and just hearing the same and over and over again, and, you know, from, especially from somebody that doesn't even live in the city, you know, and he thinks that he owns the city, and he can tell you, you know, that he's gonna find out what you did, and what you having dinner with somebody, that's not our business, you know? So I just want the lawyer to see the things that they have in the other cities, and it's not about, what do you call it, that you cannot say what you want, but it's one thing is to have the right to say what you want, and another thing to be rude, and to be talking about things that we really don't need to hear. So I hope that you work on that, because it's been like, more than five years that my husband asked for it, and nothing has happened yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Alright, moving on with public communication, anyone else wishing to speak? Alrighty, come on up. Good evening, Anna Stevan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and city council members and other officials. I'm going to ask that you grant me a few more than three minutes, because what I have to say cannot be said in three minutes.
Yeah, you know what, allow me, allow me to have, finish out the public communication, then we'll go ahead and bring you up, okay?
Absolutely.
Because this is a, this is very special, just to let everyone know, Anna Stevan, longtime resident of city Ballpark, a graduate from Ballpark High School, whose son was ended in a very tragic event, and there's, so what I'll do, sorry about that, I'll go ahead and, once I finish, then I'll call you up.
Thank you.
Is that okay with the councilmembers?
Yes.
So at this point, go ahead and make a motion to have a special opportunity for Mrs. Stevan to come up and speak. That's my motion?
Second.
Second, any objections? See none, so move. Alright, so at this, go ahead and have a seat, and I'll bring you up in a bit. Alright, anyone else wishing to speak? Oh, Vicky Martinez, are you the Vice Mayor of the City of El Monte, or councilmember?
Councilwoman from the City of El Monte.
Okay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. I'm happy to be here. I wanted to let you all know that, I wanted to bring a personal invitation to you, as well as to the members of the city of Baldwin Park, that we've got October. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and in the City of El Monte and in the Sangiovese Valley, this is an epidemic. It's an epidemic that affects our families, it affects women, it affects men, and most often, it affects our children. It's time that we take a stand and start bringing awareness to the resources that we have collaboratively. We, and in Almani, are your sister city, and we hope that you'll join us in a couple of things. One, in proclaiming October National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Two, joining us in a pajama drive. We found that our local domestic violence shelters are in a, in a world of hurt when it comes to pajamas. A few years ago, as a champion for domestic violence awareness, we gathered purses, and they are up to their ears in purses, so this year, they asked for pajamas for the entire family. So if you'd like, I can go ahead and leave these flyers for you, and families, these are for you as well, to join us in a pajama drive. At the end of the month, we'll donate them, we'll take a drive over to YWCA Wings in Covina, the shelter that takes care of our entire community. Secondly, I wanted to personally invite you all to a Walk to End Domestic Violence, which is happening on October 19th, 5:00 at Almani City Hall. It's a symbolic walk, very short, one-mile walk around the city, in which everybody will be wearing purple or event t-shirts. We're asking a $10 donation or a gift card. We found that survivors, in their moment of need, are in need of financial resources. Something as simple as a $10 gift card can go a long way. So we hope that you'll join us for that event. I brought some flyers for that event. Mayor, councilmembers, we would love to see you there for a short program at 6:00. The flyers are in both English and Spanish. Thank you very much for the time this evening, I appreciate it, and I appreciate being here in your beautiful council chambers. I'm a little envious, there's a little council chamber envy going on right now. I'll thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, councilmember, City of Almani. You might wanna give some here, and then maybe leave some in the back there for some of the individuals as they go out. Councilmember Monica, excuse, Councilmember Cruzbaca.
Vicky, we have our domestic violence officer in the back, Cynthia Espinoza. If you would like to share something with her, that does an incredible and awesome job along with our officers here in the city of Baldwin Park.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Make sure we get one of these to you as well.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much for the time tonight.
Alright, thank you, thank you very much. Alright, so at this point, anyone else wishing to speak on our public communication?
Hello, my name's Kevin Rooney, you guys probably all know me. I'm just speaking on behalf of some frustrated parents with the schools, our children are in the basketball league for the recreation at Morgan Park. When we went on school campus, they said they don't allow the parents to be on campus no more until we get cleared, so we did what they asked, we all got our TVs and all that taken care of, and when we went back, they said, "Well, now you're Class B, but you need to be Class C clearance, which requires fingerprints and all this different stuff." As I recall, Class A is Megan's Law, Class B is for field trips, and Class C is for overnight stays. So I don't see, we're only at the practice for an hour to hour and a half every day, I don't see any problems with letting the parents go on campus and enjoy watching their kids practice. I mean, because it's a little frustrating when you're put into the parking lot, and you gotta wait an hour, hour and a half over there for your kids to come back from practice, and a lot of the parents are getting frustrated with that. I tried talking to Mondo from Recreation, I tried talking to Chief Poe, but she wasn't there, I talked with her secretary, and I talked with the principals from a couple of schools, so if you guys could do anything about that, it'd be much appreciated.
Alright, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Just to let everyone know, that is the Ballpark Unified School District, which is separate from the local municipality, but thank you for bringing that up. Alright, at this point, is this Terry Muse? Yeah, former councilwoman, that's right, okay. I thought I knew her.
Good evening, Terry Muse, representing the Ballpark Business Association. I wanted to invite everybody to two events we have coming up. The first one is our Wake Up Ballpark, will be October 12th, and our guest speakers will be the one and only Gus Romo, and, I shouldn't say one only, 'cause it's two of them, and San Gateras, they will be our speakers. We'll be at LB Cake Stop, it's a great place, they have comfy couches, and of course, great things to eat, and coffee, and everything else, so we invite the whole public to come out, it's totally free. Also, November 9th, we're gonna be doing a member appreciation event, 8:00 in the morning at the Marriott, and it's gonna be a chance for all of our new and renewing members to get honored, network. We have some really cool plaques that we've created to be able to hand out at ribbon cuttings, but also, when people renew, it'll have, you know, member sense, and they'll keep giving them, hopefully, every year they renew, they'll get another year sticker on their plaque, so we're gonna be giving those out to anybody new or renewing. So we'd hope somebody can come and represent the city, we know the staff always does a great job of doing that, but we'd also like to see the community.
Thank you, thank you very much. Alright, anyone else wishing to speak on our public communication?
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor.
How are you?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
You all know I get very nervous speaking to, one-on-one, I'm pretty good. First of all, I wanna address the council, good to see you guys once again, chief, brothers and sisters around. One thing I do wanna say, and I think this young lady that mentioned it, you keep hearing the same thing over and over, and I'm gonna use scripture, scripture says that, "When I was a child, spoke, reasoned, did everything as a child, but on becoming man, things change." It kinda helped me, I mean, it worked for me. So my point is, instead of fussing and fighting among each other as children do, we should stand up and take a deep breath and be who we are, who we were called to be, I'm just expressing. I'm not saying you're bad people, but everybody's gonna argue. Psalm 62 reads, you know, "They shake your hand, they do, but as soon as you turn around, they curse you inwardly, or even while they're shaking hands." You have to speak from the heart, truthfully. Spirit of the Sermon will give it to you, if you search, seek, and find, it says, Matthew 7:7 says, "Ask, he'll give it to you; seek, you'll find it; knock, it'll open up." Now what I'm saying, back to the domestic violence, I sit and I meditate on many things. I don't like watching news broadcasts, and yes, what happened in Vegas is, was to me, in my opinion, pure evil. There's no excuse for that, at all. I don't know anything about that domestic violence, I used to be pretty bad, been married for many years, I'm saying, but, until I found the path again, that's when I started walking straight, and I thank God, and you got a rearview mirror, but I try not to look in that, you got a big wide horizon out front, that's the way I am. My point is this, domestic violence, yes. On the news, I don't know if you're, if you're aware of it, but this one brother that, for whatever reason, I think, I know, I'm not sure, I'm not a doctor, he took his little boy and killed his own child. I studied that lady that supposedly was hurting. Now, in my opinion, just an opinion, that lady was just as much involved as this gentleman, or that brother that killed, 'cause I'm sure that hurt. Then you read, there's a lady that hangs herself, and hangs herself with her child. The other brother kills his two kids and kills himself. My suggestion would be, whoever can get to that deep root, is whoever handles this, is if you see, as you say, domestic violence in a family, snatch those kids away from that couple, and put them out somewhere safe, and let them fight it out, however they're gonna do it, because these kids didn't even have a chance to grow. I don't know how you would handle something like that, that's what I see. It goes deeper than just divorce, or separation, or any of that crap, excuse the expression, but that's a deep subject, I don't know who to address it to, but you guys have the, do it for the children.
Alright, thank you, thank you very much. Alright, at this point, moving on with public communication, anyone else, anyone else wishing to speak? If not, I will now declare the public communication closed. Real quick, just wanna address several other things. First of all, Sam, could you refreshen us on the actual swings over at the Wana Creek Park?
Yes, the swing set was specified to be removed and disposed of, so as soon as the contractor moved in, and during the demolition process, he broke it down and disposed of the swing set.
Alrighty, okay. Thank you for that, and then also, wanna just send- And then also, want to just send, before I forget, like Mr. Reels came up here and spoke, Margarita, and I hear what you're saying, and all the individuals that came up here. Just so that the audience know, that the First Amendment right, the Constitution of the United States is very unique. It allows you the right as a resident, whomever the person is, to come up here and outright just fabricate information. There are several individuals that are very well-known to come up here. Now, the Constitution itself protects them, so we, as elected officials, have absolutely no recourse as far as suing them. So they could come up here, you could go to any city, as a matter of fact, one of the individuals that, you know, I could go to his city and outright say something about his mayor or council that is not true, and the First Amendment right protects me from being prosecuted in any form or way. That applies to every elected individual in the United States of America. So I want to make that clear so that individuals know and understand that there are individuals that come up here with no evidence whatsoever, but the Constitution, I love it because it protects them, meaning I could do that as well, if I was out in the audience myself. So at this point, council members, yes, Councilmember Cruz-Baca.
Mr. Rooney, I don't know if this will help, but I know that the mayor said that it's a school district. I would contact the president of the school board, Christina Lucero, or one of the school board members. I know Margarita Vargas' daughter is also one of the board members. I think you should discuss it with them, or a better suggestion is to go to one of their school board meetings and speak on behalf of that so that they can listen to you and do something about that a little faster, because we, it's not our jurisdiction in a sense. So I hope that helps.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, I just have a quick comment. We're having a Baldwin Park parade on November 4th, it starts at 9:45. So hopefully, everybody could get their friends and families together and join us in their favorite parade that we have, brought back again this year, and I think it was last year. Also, our grand marshal is Yarell Ramos, she is with Channel 34, so she'll be our grand marshal, so hopefully, everybody could attend that and watch their children also play in the bands. And also, we had a code enforcement update in our special meeting today. The city council is taking a look at its code enforcement and see how we could better beautify the city through code enforcement and work in that area, so we'll be reporting and updating on that new department, or revising that department as we continue. And also, I know Mr. Tuttle typically comes up here and makes comments, very uninformed but passionate comments that he's made. And yes, there was a case that he did sue us through Small Kings Court, one of the things that he forgot to tell you was, he lost that case. And he came through and we did attend, it was, he sued my wife, myself, Mayor Rosano, and Councilwoman Monica, because he stalked us basically from Baldwin Park to another restaurant in Santa Barbara, and then the next day, he continued stalking us at a hotel. So we brought that to the attention of the judge in the Small Kings case, and while he lost the case, but he didn't tell you that. And also, my concern is that the amount of public information he requests are tremendous. There's so many requests being made that it's literally backlogging the city from Finance Department and the Parks and Recreation Police Department, and I'm going to bring that forth, I'm going to start bringing forth how many thousands of dollars that Greg Tuttle has cost this city in these outrageous public information requests. That kind of money could be spent on law enforcement officers' positions or Parks and Rec positions, but we continue to go to the general fund to pay for these thousands of dollars that we have in public information requests that he makes, and to no avail, they don't bring out any kind of information that's valid. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Cruz-Baca, council member Monica Garcia.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to just acknowledge the comments made by Margarita Vargas, and I think we've heard you, you know, loud and clear, and I want to thank you for being an advocate for the rules of decorum. It was something that I brought to the council last week, and Councilmember Cruz-Baca asked that the item be tabled, so I look forward that it will come back and we can reconsider that, because unfortunately, there is such a negative tone that is, becomes a distraction here for the council, for our staff unfortunately, but more importantly, you know, for the community. When we should be really talking about city business and what benefits the community, we're here having to take these attacks, and we know they're the same people that come up, and you know, they're, essentially, they are political operatives, they have an agenda, and they're not going to go away, they're going to continue to come here, you know, meeting after meeting, because they are the campaign associates to certain council members here on this council, and just, you know, perpetuating negative messages, negative messaging. I do want to say that one of those individuals had a restraining order against him, and I'm going to go ahead, you know, this person likes to come to these meetings and question my character, but let me share a little bit about his.
Can we stay with you?
Sheila Ann Tuttle, the petitioner versus Greg Sebastian Tuttle, the respondent, and she says, "I, Sheila Ann Tuttle, hereby state and declare, under penalty of perjury, the following is true and correct." And she goes on to say, "I am seeking this order on an ex parte application based on the fact"
Excuse me, stop being disruptive.
"...the respondent has caused physical harm to our daughter and is mentally abusing both of us to the point we are in fear of our lives." And so that gives a little bit of context on why we've taken some of the actions that we have, you know, but bottom line is, this is political, and it's going to continue unfortunately. Hopefully, the rules of decorum will help set a more positive tone moving forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Cruz-Baca.
First of all, I need to clarify something. I did not table the orders of decorum. A year and a half ago, as we know, and let me repeat it again for probably the 10th time, I was the one that had brought up, because of all the turmoil and all the commotion that went on, and all the mudslinging up here on the dais. Of course, it was not, I was not listened to. It wasn't until Councilmember Garcia felt that she was being slandered and she was being attacked, that of course, it was important to her to bring them back. I did not table them. And I believe that Councilmember Pacheco agreed with me that we were going to have a study session so that we would all take a look at the orders of decorum and decide collectively what we would include as far as respecting not only ourselves up here on the dais and our staff, but also the people from the audience. And with that note, I'm not going to, I just want to, on a lighter note, say thank you so very much to staff and everybody for the incredible success of our street fair, and it saddened me to see that end, because in last Thursday, I was actually going through withdrawal, thinking, "What do I do tonight?" But it was a wonderful, wonderful, thank you so very much, Manny Carrillo, everyone, all staff, everyone that helps put this together, and all the residents and the people from outside that came here to enjoy such beautiful evenings that we had. Also, last Sunday, we attended the business people, Ballpark business people for breast cancer, and we had some of our police officers there as well, and I believe that the pink patches and the caps are becoming a big success. Don't forget that the whole month of October will be breast cancer awareness along with the domestic violence, but our officers are selling the patches, the pink patches, and the caps as well now, so please do, it's going to a worthy cause. All of the proceeds will go to City of Hope, so thank you so much. And don't forget El Dia de los Muertos, if you're looking for something to do on a Thursday night, it's October the 5th tomorrow, and it starts at 5:00 till 9:00, and that's another great event, of course, with the Halloween coming up for our kids and everything, so that our police officers put on every year. So there's a lot of wonderful events coming up, I won't take any more time, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz-Baca. All right, so at this point, I'm going to go ahead and ask Anna Stavert to come up here. So we're given an opportunity to be able to share information that she has, that I personally believe, and of course, all the council members and citizens are very pertinent for us to know.
Oh, Mayor, real fast, I'm sorry, I forgot to thank Diana Robles for making these beautiful little awareness corsages, I guess, for us to wear. Thank you, Diana.
All righty, good evening.
You're good?
Go ahead, that's fine.
Okay, good evening. My name is Anna Estevez, and Adamas de Andresi II, also known as Peaky, is my son. I want to begin by expressing my thanks to you, Mr. Mayor, and to the council members and other officials for giving me the opportunity to speak with you, not only about my son, but also how we can protect children. I think what I have to say is so relevant to what was spoken about earlier regarding Domestic Violence Month and the prayer that was offered at the beginning, all of this is relevant and it connects. So my purpose here tonight is to share information about Resolution 72. I provided copies for each of the council members, as well as additional copies are available in the back. And I'm here to ask for your support, and the support of everyone in this room. However, before I discuss the resolution, I do want to share the driving force behind why I am here and why I am doing what I'm doing. When my ex-husband failed to show up on April 22nd, 2017, for a custody exchange, I feared the worst. After calling the police and being notified that our must-senior was found unconscious and was taken to a hospital on a psychiatric hold of 5150 and later arrested, I was horrified. When the police told me there was no sign of my son, my life was thrown into a chaos that can only be described as a cataclysmic devastation. For two months, I, along with hundreds of others, many law enforcement agencies, search and rescue teams, fire departments, searched for my son. On June 30th, 2017, that was the most tragic, earth-shattering day of my life. This was the day two detectives came knocking on my door late at night to inform me that my son's lifeless body was found in a heavily wooded area on some random hillside in Santa Barbara County. On this night, the light in my life was extinguished forever. While my son's lifeless body sat propped up against a tree for two months, his father was in Las Vegas, living recklessly and enjoying life to the fullest. This tragedy was allowed to happen, in part due to the failure of the court system as well as the Department of Children and Family Services. These entities make decisions without critically evaluating evidence or doing thorough research. These entities make decisions that destroy lives and kill children. Peaky, my son, was my beacon of light, my hope, and my love. He was my greatest happiness, he had an immense heart and loved life. He loved life. My son was kind and gentle, and loved to learn, laugh, read, play, garden, bake and give hugs, and love unconditionally. Peaky is forever my gift from God, the gift that was shared with me for five years, two months, and two days. He was my only child, and he was my life. For this tragic reason, I am here before you today to share information about how we can change the failed system and protect children. Change is not going to happen overnight, and nothing that I do will bring my son, Peaky, back. However, if I, or we, or you can save a child's life, then that is what we are charged to do. For almost one and a half years, I have been involved with the family court, and part of that time, I was scrutinized by DCFS. At no time did the court or DCFS, for that matter, listen to my pleas or review undisputable evidence that I provided. On April 12th and 13th, 2017, I appeared in court begging for sole custody with supervised visits. My request was denied, even though I presented evidence countering the lies that my son's And with the court, that I feared for both my, and I informed the court that I feared for both my safety and my son's safety. Eight days later, my son was murdered. On September 7th, I met with Congressman Meehan from Pennsylvania's Legislative Director regarding Resolution 72. On Saturday, I planned to meet with Congresswoman Bass, and I've also reached out to Congresswoman Napolitano regarding Resolution 72. Resolution 72 was introduced in July by Representatives Meehan and Maloney, Meehan from Pennsylvania, Maloney from Texas, and it describes the problems in state courts and recommends procedural changes at the state level to reduce the profound errors currently occurring. The resolution is not perfect, but it is a start and it is a platform that can be built upon. As you know, custody litigation is handled under state law, or in California, it's family law. Congress recognizes that there is a nationwide epidemic and the fact that individual state courts and legislatures have failed to address the corruption and dysfunction of the current court system. Each year, an estimated 58,000 at-risk children in separating families are failed by state family courts, which ignore parents' pleas to protect them from an abusive parent, regularly awarding such parents unsupervised visits or even custody, which is what happened to me. A study of over 175 children recently murdered by fathers involved in custody litigation interviewed judges and court administrators in communities where the tragedies were committed. When asked what reforms had been implemented in response to the tragedy, the answer was always none. Each judge believed the tragedy in their community was an exception. Researchers have documented a minimum of 594 children murdered in the United States in the past 10 years by a parent involved in a divorce, separation, custody, visitation, or child support proceeding. Many of these murders occurred after access was provided by family courts over the objection of the protective parent. My son was number 592. While there are several potential entry points for federal involvement, the essential first step is for Congress to recognize and express its concerns about the epidemic and urge states to respond. That is what Resolution 72 does. It recognizes the epidemic and provides guidelines that can influence changes in state law, which is desperately needed. A critical component of Resolution 72 is ongoing oversight. The proposal is for Congress to hold hearings on family court practices with regard to objective, fair, and adjudication of children's safety and civil rights. Currently, there is no oversight system in California's family court. Judges make decisions that destroy lives, and they answer to no one. How many of you up here on this panel have children? Probably most of you. How many of you have grandchildren? Nieces or nephews? If you answered yes, then this resolution applies to you, because never did I imagine that I would be living this nightmare, or standing before a city council, or interviewing with Dr. Phil, or providing statements to the media about how my son was murdered by his father, a man who was supposed to protect and love him. I am here tonight, asking you, the council, and all members present, to take an oath from this day forward to protect children, all children. My son was beautiful, he was gifted, and he was innocent, and he did not deserve to die. Another innocent child cannot die at the hands of a sociopathic parent. I humbly ask the council to support Resolution 72 as follows. Immediately write to the U.S. House Representatives in California, not just the one for our designated area, expressing a sense of urgency for this resolution and requesting that they cosponsor this resolution immediately. I was told by Congressman Meehan's Legislative Director that in order for this to reach the floor in the House, we have to have at least 100 cosponsors, 100 representatives that support this resolution. Prior to yesterday, let me backtrack, the interview that I did with Dr. Phil aired yesterday. yesterday. Prior to yesterday, we had 11. Today, we have 15. We have a lot of work to do. I also ask that the council share this resolution with other city officials and request their support. They too should write to congressmen and congresswomen in California requesting that they co-sponsor this resolution. And finally, I'm asking that you publish information on Resolution 72 in the Baldwin Park Now paper, so that the residents are informed, and please have them, or offer a recommendation that they call their local representatives and demand support. My son was innocent, and he deserved none of this. So I'm asking all of you to please support Resolution 72. Write to your congress, to all of the congress members here in California, so that we can get it on the floor and passed. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anna, just want to, first of all, of course, you know, our deepest condolences, and had an opportunity, Councilmonica and I, to visit your parents, and of course, I personally apologize to you for, obviously, certain circumstances that were not, excuse me, on my part, and I think both you and I spoke to that just recently. What we want to do is make this into an actual resolution, so we can pass it to all the cities in the San Gabriel Valley. And of course, on our part, our Congresswoman Grace Napolitano, who I've already made a call in, and then to see what could be done at the state level. Of course, we have our state Senator, Dr. Hernandez, and also newly-elected state Assembly Member Blanco Rubio, because it also begins at the state, since they're all independent, and to see what we can do. And it's sad to hear that your son becomes 592 that have literally been killed, based on some of the ignorance and some of the renderings by specific judges and what have you. And I think it needs to be changed, and I know that you are going to persevere. And I'm just lost for words, but provide you comfort that we're with you, and our condolences goes out, because your son will never be forgotten. And I know that as a mother, you're going to continue to keep that, that torch lit, to be able to inform others of what's transpiring. And as you're speaking here tonight, that same tragedy is repeating itself somewhere in this country, and we have to come to some type of level where we stop it. So on behalf of the City of Baldwin Park, our condolences goes out to you, and we're going to definitely fight with you together.
I appreciate that, and you're right, my son will not be forgotten. I am also establishing a nonprofit organization in his name called Peaky's Justice, and it's multifaceted. There are four components. One is family services. Another is legislative advocacy. The third component is establishing a memorial scholarship in his name, because my son loved preschool and was so excited to start kindergarten, which he never did. And the fourth component is establishing a safe haven called Peaky's Playhouse, where a parent, a parent can take their child in a safe environment and build their relationship and engage in activities together, activities that my son enjoyed doing.
We're going to also commit to you, we, we plant trees in memory of some of the individuals that have participated in Baldwin Park, so we want to be able to do that. And we'll, we'll do a special event, so that we get everyone, the community there, and those that are, to be able to honor and place an actual plaque there, here in the City Baldwin Park, on behalf of your son, and your continued move forward in informing the general public.
Thank you, and I appreciate that you've reached out to Grace Napolitano.
Yes.
During the search for my son, Assemblywoman Blanco Rubio was very supportive, as well as the LA County Supervisors and Mayor Eric Garcetti as well. So I thank you for that, and I thank you all for your support. And please, please, please write your congressperson about Resolution 72. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, yes. Councilmember Cruzbaca.
My condolences, as the mayor said, it's something where, that leaves you speechless, even though you heard it in the news, it seems like it just happened today. But you can start with Councilmember Vicky Martinez, is here from the City of El Monte, if you want to start with, with her, you know, and of course, our domestic violence coordinators are in the back. So know that, I am repeating what Mayor Lozano said, know that the City of Baldwin Park, and we will also reach out to others, so that we can be in support of this resolution. Thank you so very much.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Baca.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, well, okay, Ben, I've said, we could pass this actual resolution on an emergency basis, so what we want to do at this point is, we'll just partially enter the 115 Congress for Session Resolution Number 72, so that is my motion.
Second.
Second, any objections seen, and so move. Then, yeah, real quick, I just want to also, see, we could include it in the actual city newsletter. Of course, it's already out, I believe, right? So it would be the following month that we could do that. All right, yes.
Mayor, can we also have a letter sent from the city to, like, the request was from Anna, to all congress members in the state of California?
Absolutely.
And if there's any additional information that we can include in that communication, but just a very unified message encouraging that they co-sponsor this legislation?
All right, okay, that's fine.
That'll be my motion, if I need one. Do I need to make a motion?
Yes, we'll go ahead and place that, we'll adopt that to the current motion, yes.
As part of this, okay.
And I would like to include the assembly members as well, because at the state level, because I think that it should, and senators as well, because I think it's, it's an overall issue that has happened. It's, it's close to home this time. However, I think that there's too many of these children that are suffering.
That's correct. All right, thank you. So we'll go ahead and include that, and I made a motion, and it was seconded by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, and you have, legal counsel.
Just so that we're clear on, on the motion, Mr. Mayor, that the council has voted to support Resolution Number 72, and also to send letters to all of the congressmen and women in California, asking them to co-sponsor Resolution Number 72. That's the motion.
Yes, that, that is correct, and we're going to, thank you, legal counsel. At this point, I'd like to open up the consent calendars, we have items one through nine. Councilmembers wishing to pull any items? Okay, if not, I'll go ahead and make a motion to pass consent calendars, items one through nine.
Second.
Who is seconding it?
I do.
Councilmember Cruzbaca, any objections seen, and so move. Well, that's record. All right.
I know, I know.
Thank you. All right, the next one is item 10, which is reports of officers. Item 10, the authorization to reduce fees charged for released police reports. So at this point, Chief Mike Taylor.
Yes, sir. As you know, at the last council meeting, it was brought to council's attention about our prices that we charge for police reports. So we were tasked with doing a little study with it, which you have in your hands. Basically, the increase came back in September 21st, 2016, from $20 to $50. That's a little bit of the history about it. So what we did is we did a survey of all the surrounding cities, and if you flip to the attachment on your report, you'll see a memorandum addressed to me. The, actually went to Captain Joe Bartolotti from Sergeant Patino, and he did a survey of just about all the surrounding cities and the prices that they charge for their police reports. And those prices vary from zero. Two cities, I believe, charge absolutely nothing, and the highest goes up to $33, and then another one goes up to about $50, $55. What we're doing is we're putting this before council. We have five recommendations. If you look on the second page of the staff study, one of the recommendations is to charge zero for police reports. If we do that, the city made annually last year about $49,000, which would be a loss to the city. The second recommendation that we have would be to not charge the Baldwin Park residents that are victims of crimes. We haven't been able to capture that information, so we don't know exactly what that would cost, but we do know that we would, there would be less revenue coming into the city with that one. The third recommendation would be to go back to our previous costs, which was $20 per police report, and that would basically cut the amount in half to about $24,000 that we would bring in annually. And the next recommendation would be to basically charge what the PRA request charges. We don't know what that would bring in in terms of revenue, because we don't capture that information. And the last recommendation would be just to leave it as it is currently.
All right, okay, chief, hold on real quick. All right, chief, just, okay, so those recommendations, because you, the one that makes sense to me, now, we'll get over to Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, are, number two, the council, council may elect not to charge Baldwin Park residents that are victims of crimes. However, I would like to include that if it's an attorney or insurance company, that they be charged directly, with, of course, excluding the victim if they come here to City Hall.
You mean if it's a, if it's an insurance company?
Yeah, if it's a resident of Baldwin Park, we'll, we'll let them go, in other words, we'll give it to them for free. However, if it's the actual insurance company or an attorney, they should be able to pay those fees.
Oh, man, I think item number two, as you stated, does that. Only victims of crimes would not be charged. So I would, if you made that motion?
Yes, I'll go ahead and make that a motion.
I'll second that.
Any objections? Seen none, so move, all right.
So option number two is what we voted for.
Yes, option number two, council may elect not to charge Baldwin Park residents that are victims of crimes. But keep in mind, attorneys and insurance companies will have to pay.
And, Mr. Mayor?
They're the ones asking for it directly.
In addition to attorneys and insurance companies, is it your intent, or the council's intent, that anyone other than a Baldwin Park resident who's a victim of a crime has to pay the $50?
That is correct. That only applies for residents of Baldwin Park.
They're victims of crime.
A victim of crimes, that's correct.
But if, hold on, I just need to understand this. But if they're residents of Baldwin Park and an insurance company or an attorney's dealing with the case, then they do pay the fee, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that there's clarification, that, I understood that, but I do want to clarify that that's what it's going, that's what's going to be understood.
Yes, and Councilmember Baca, in those instances, in those kind of cases and so forth that go forward, those costs are all absorbed by someone other than the Baldwin Park resident, whether it's an insurance company, or the law firm, or something else, but those costs are absorbed by someone other than your residents.
A third party.
That's right.
Thank you.
All righty, okay, so then the next ones, let's bring this, hold on, reports of officers, authorization to reduce, excuse me, 11, review of applications and consideration of appointments for vacancies in the Housing Commission. Let's bring that back, let's go over to that, I think that maybe one, the planning commission?
I second bringing back, item 11.
Okay, bring that back. I'll deal with the planning commission. So the ones I have, the, for the commissioners, I want to go ahead and make the motion for Commissioner Kevin Rooney, also for Commissioner Edwin Borcas, and appoint Christopher Sines as a commissioner. That is my motion.
Second.
Any objections? Seen none, so move. The reason I want to bring it back is that means that Mr. Christopher Sines will no longer be part of the park and rec, so we have to put that out once again.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, so we're going to mix it up. Yes, so, and then we'll deal with the others, with the park and recs at that specific time. All right, so at this point, we'll go over to, actually, council members' requests. Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco would like to discuss how city might support recent disaster relief efforts due to the largest.
Mayor, I'll bring that back to the next meeting.
Number 13, applications, appointment for vacant seats for the Recreation and Community Services?
Yeah, we'll bring that one back.
Oh, okay.
Mayor, I'll bring that back to the next meeting, because this one is such a short meeting.
Sounds good, boy, 8:15. All right, so at this point, let's, council members have anything to say, I will move for adjournment at the city council. Any objections? Seen none, so move.
Second.
Viva Baldwin Park, buena noche.
That's a record.
That's right.
I've been here.
Okay, the city attorney said this is record.
I didn't pull anything from the, from the, from the.
Yeah, thank you very much. Councilmember Cruzbaca.
No, it wasn't that I didn't want to, there wasn't anything to pull.
Yeah, let's see. Hello. Gosh, that parade is coming up already, huh?
Oh, it's fast.
So incredible. I was looking out at the chair.
Oh, Chris, I didn't know you were here, congratulations.
Is this a recycle right here?
It's a whole terminal mine.
So, um, her daughter went to school in the garden, and she knew it, she knew it pretty well. She knew it was that one.
Yeah.
And of course, yeah.
Can I just give you a moment?
I know, I know, it's so sad. Well, you know what, my mom, who was a member of the Baldwin Park School District, and she was very closely with Carolyn Ellis, who was stewardess around the park. So, I've seen her, I've seen her appear in there like it was a child, and I know that...